Betsy Wilkerson, thank you for joining me on the Tea with Amanda Rowley to spill the tea on who you are. We're happy to have you here.
Well, thanks so much for having me and I like spilling the tea. So I look forward to our conversation.
Well, great. Well, so first I have to ask you, what tea did you decide to sip on with me today?
I got a white tea. It's different and very tasty. So I'll have to try it again.
Yes, and a hot tea is my thing.
And a hot tea is my thing, yeah.
I've got the orange cinnamon spice for that fall kind of taste.
Oh, yes. It is that time of year.
There we go. Well, let's dive right into it. Betsy, you're running for Spokane City Council President. First of all, the big question, right? Why did you decide to run for this position?
That's the big question everybody keeps asking me. And I want to say it really wasn't something I had aspired to do. It's like, oh, my gosh, I want to be City Council President. But when Council President Beggs got his new opportunity, that created a space and no one was stepping up. And that's what leadership does. Leadership steps up when there's no one else. And I thought, this is a great opportunity for me and I think a good opportunity for our city.
Well said. Now, Betsy, this is going to be the first election where you've actually had to run against someone. You were appointed when you first came onto council. You ran unopposed in the last cycle. So what has it been like now finally running against someone?
You know, it's been very interesting. Not much different because I always like to be with the people. So being out and meeting people and listening to what they have to say isn't any different. I just think it's been more of an opportunity because it's citywide. When you just run for a district, you just have this smaller geographic area you have to deal with.
You have a wider net to cover now.
But now I have a wider net. So District 1 and District 3, it's been exciting to get in to know those citizens and the challenges that they face. More footwork.
More footwork, yes. Getting those steps in.
Getting those steps in.
And now, Betsy, this is a historic race for Spokane. We have two women running for Spokane City Council President. So either whoever wins, we will have Spokane's first elected, first woman elected to Spokane City Council President. And for you, second black woman as Council President. I want to get your thoughts on that. What would that mean to you if you make that sort of historical mark here in Spokane?
You know, I got to tell you, I never really thought about that when I put my name in to step up. But I do realize that representation matters. And Spokane is growing and it's more diverse. And I think we have to really be out there and show not only Spokane, but the surrounding area and the communities. Spokane is on the forefront of lots of opportunities and the people who lead. But for young people, I got to tell you, I went to LC last week and I got to speak to three senior civics classes. That was interesting. But they're engaged in government and they were just as surprised to see me. So I don't want it to be an anomaly anymore. I want it to be the norm that you see people of color in our city government going forward. And to have a city that's ran by women that is historic, I really feel women lead differently than men and we're much more collaborative. So on the mayor's side and on the council side, that will be historic for Spokane.
What would you say it took for you to get here?
Amanda, community service and saying yes to opportunities. A lot of times people say, well, you want to volunteer for this, you want to volunteer for that. And we will say, no, I don't have time. And that's a true response for many people. But I have found the power of yes can move us personally in directions we never thought we would go. You know, historically, when Jim West was mayor, I spent a lot of time with him because he was in my church. And Roberta Green was in my church. And I admired them, but never saw myself in this place. But serving our community, and I believe I've been a servant leader long before that was coined the term servant leadership. You know, helping people is what I do and I'll continue to do that no matter where I sit.
You had mentioned you're running for a position that has a wider net, a bigger group of constituents. So I was hoping you could talk a little bit more about your background and who you are. For people that are new to you representing them in the bigger picture. So you're a grandmother of triplets who you brought with you on your campaign announcement. And I recall when you were appointed to City Council, they're the ones that encouraged you to take the office. So kind of talk me through that. Tell me your background.
They were a lot younger then when they said, run granny, run. Now they're in ninth grade and they're a little too cool to say that anymore now. But you know, I lived in Hilliard and my kids went to Cooper Elementary. So I'm familiar with that district. And now I become more familiar with the Shiloh, Shado Park area. And really who I am is, we have so much more in common. Each of our districts are struggling with economic development, especially Hilliard and East Central. There's a definite alignment there with challenges and opportunities. So looking at that. But just working with different communities, at the high school, there are 37 languages spoken in Spokane Public Schools.
Wow.
So that just shows you how diverse. I looked amongst the crowd, I thought, oh, my God, this is Spokane right here.
That's impressive.
Absolutely impressive. We don't see it every day, but it exists. So all those children have parents and they're in this city. And I want to make sure they have a voice to be heard and not be invisible. We have to bring everybody into the fold to make better decisions and to be a city where we all belong.
Kind of heading right into my next question of what are, what would you say are the top three things that you would want to change in Spokane as Council President?
So we got the top three hot issues that we will talk about. But changing is my commitment, I'll come back to those, is my commitment to really support small businesses. During COVID, small businesses were the ones that was the economic engine of our city. First of all, they kept me from starving because I could go to a restaurant and find something to eat. That was powerful. And the new nonprofits that have come on the scene since COVID that are doing amazing grassroots work in our community and helping to make Spokane thrive. Those are two areas I really like to see continued investment, continuing to lobby at the state, you know, to help fund those two entities. And again, have those voices at the table. The hot button issues, of course, is public safety. Without a doubt, everybody wants to be safe, Amanda. And so there's a narrative out there that's really disconcerting to me that I don't want public safety. But I have grandchildren and there are other people and their children. We all deserve that. So continuing to support public safety is paramount. And then our homeless crisis. So the median average income in Spokane is $51,000. $51,000. That's a family of four. Family of four with housing are right on the verge of homelessness. That is something we're not talking about. We're focusing on that maybe 5% to 10% of homeless people who have the most difficult challenges. But what about the working poor? Working two jobs, barely making it. I have a story of an employee, she broke up with a boyfriend. We've all heard that before. And she had to sofa surf for several months to get the money to have a down payment to get her own place.
And you hear a lot of those stories.
You hear a lot of those stories. And our seniors who are on fixed incomes and their rents are going up. So the housing issue is absolutely critical. And the regional homelessness, we need to partner. Because you know what? We are a region. Nobody really knows. Or we do, but most folks don't know where the city of Spokane ends and the valley begins. They don't know where Airway Heights begins or Deer Park or Liberty Lake. They just see it as one big region. And our problems are too big for one municipality. We have got to work together for not only the best outcomes, but for the funding component as well. And we got to work with our state and federal partners because we just don't have those type of pockets, you know, for the solutions that we need going forward.
Well, let's dive into some of those. You kind of hit on the big three, right? Let's see, with public safety, I understand on your campaign website, you talk about wanting to strengthen community safety. What exactly does that mean to you?
Well, first of all, it's community safety, but it starts with communication. So many communities don't feel they have the same relationship with public safety as some others do. And I know they have put forth a community policing model, but what does that really look like? And to me, that's engaging with people where they live. So they know a police officer. It's pretty hard to build relationships when someone just comes in and then they go out. We have got to work on that. You know, we had conversations, the mayor's office with public safety and those conversations disintegrated and they were never reestablished. We got to start that first off. We have to do that along with the funding piece. And really letting our officers be part of the community. That's what I'd like to see. I like to see them walking downtown and young people engage. I like to see them in schools and community centers. And yes, we have a staffing challenge and that would be hard. But it is aspirational. And I think that's what will make us stronger in public safety.
Do you feel like Spokane is safe or could it be better?
I think Spokane is safe. And I think there is the tale of two Spokans. People who live here do not feel safe. And that's valid. That's absolutely valid. And then you have our tourism population who come here and say Spokane's an amazing place. Downtown is great, it's wonderful. They're not seeing the crime and the drug deals going on. We can always do better. I don't think in public safety, we will have ever arrived.
There's always room to grow.
There's always room to go. And the challenges will be different because we're human. And so we have to be prepared for that and open to the solutions to meet whatever those challenges are. I don't think public safety, as good as it's done, can always do it the same way they've always done it. It has to evolve. It just has to evolve.
What are some key steps that you would want to take as Council President to improve public safety?
Again, in this community, communication has been, I think undermined a lot of what we could do. And many of our critical departments, police and fire, are very siloed departments. And we could bridge that more. And really, how do we bring our community partners in who are doing some of the work around mental health? How could that be more beneficial? How could we really thread that? So police, fire, and mental health. We have some right now. We need to grow that. We absolutely know we need to grow that. I think that is foundational. And again, education. It's the old DARE program. I'm not advocating for DARE. But we don't have any of those programs in our schools. And that's where children first have their encounter with police officers and build that trust and relationship. I think those are some really low hanging fruits that we could start immediately.
So Betsy, I want to ask you something that your opponent has criticized you for in the realm of public safety. Your opponent has criticized you for comments in an email thread with Council President Lori Kinnear implying that you could do a better job than the Spokane Police Department and that the rise in crime is a police issue. So how do you respond to that criticism?
So thank you for that because, first of all, taken totally out of context. And when an elected sits and we hear from our citizens, because we're the face of the city, who come with their concerns, meeting after meeting, lack of police response, no police response. And we can't do anything about it because our citizens need to understand, council cannot direct staff. I just can't call the police and have them show up at your house. That's not the structure of our government. So Councilmember Kinnear and I were both expressing frustration that we can't do anything. And it wasn't a flippant comment, absolutely. But the pressure of trying to meet everybody's needs as human beings sometimes can really push you a little bit over the edge. And so, but it was never meant to minimize or degrade our officers in any shape, form, or fashion.
So are you taking, maybe taking back the comment of we could do better than the police?
Well, we, absolutely.
What's the context? I want to make sure, yeah.
The context, again, we were just frustrated about how many citizens were frustrated with policing and the response to policing. And I think Councilmember Kinnear says, well, we could do better. Well, no, we can't do better because we're not police officers. So no, we can't do better. But we will continue to fund officers and give them the tools they need so they can do better. And that's where we're at right now. It's really strengthening that relationship, Amanda. So when somebody trolls your emails and takes stuff out of context to make it a campaign issue. And it's pretty sad that that's the level of, that it has gotten to.
I do want to ask a couple other points that she's brought up, but I wanted to point out there are key differences between your opponent's campaign and yours. You came right out the gate making a campaign promise that you would run a positive campaign. Whereas I think every email, I could safely say every email I've received from Kim Pleas' campaign has had negative or criticizing comments about you. So what do you think, how do you think the difference in campaign styles will do to impact voters?
Well, I hope Spokane sees it for what it is. And I did make that campaign promise. And I have kept it because I'm running on my record. I'm running on my record. And if I have to put somebody down to win, then I shouldn't be sitting in that seat. I will tell you, as a grandmother, what's been a little disconcerting about the negative campaigning is that our children are seeing that and they don't understand it. So my grandkids are seeing this on HGTV or some channel and coming to me. I have an employee who's watching TV and she saw it with her granddaughter, who was five. And she asked her grandmother, who is that black lady on TV? So it feels to me like it's seeding fear and fear mongering. And I believe Spokane is so far past that because we really want a positive. We're tired of the fighting. We're just tired of the fighting. So negativity has never solved anything that I'm aware of.
Another thing, not directed at you, but your opponent has criticized City Council for what she believes is for not taking public safety seriously. How do you respond to that? Do you think council, in your time in council, have you taken public safety seriously?
Oh, my gosh. Look at our record. Look at council's record of how we have funded public safety. That's the tool we have to take public safety seriously. You can even see a quote from the guild president of the police where he applauds council and their support of the public safety officers. So that's the tool we have. That's the tool we've been using. We have funded them. We have lobbied for them. And we will continue to do that. When I went on my ride along, the officer I rode with was the same age as my son. Of course, I wanted him to be safe. I want him to come home at night to his family and live a full life. So that's another misnomer out there. And it's just not true.
Enjoy some of the tea, please. That white tea there, it looks yummy, very refreshing. Well, keeping, well, one more other question here with public safety. So some people in the community have expressed their concern and frustration with Spokane Police Chief Craig Midell. They're not happy with Chief Midell for giving what they call special access and information to downtown business owners. You're sitting on City Council. You recall even updating city code to allow the office of the police ombudsman to investigate the police chief. So I wanted to get your take. Spill the tea for me because you were part of that decision making.
I was part of that.
Do you think, I guess, reiterate for me, do you think the chief was justified in providing that level of access to those business owners?
I think every, no citizen should have special access. We should all be equal and have access to public safety and go through the process. I think that is the perception that some people in Spokane get special treatment on where you live, how much money you have, and who you know. That undermines the civic process and it undermines the trust of the citizens. So I believe, I don't know what the chief is thinking was. There were hundreds of emails out there. I will say council has had difficulty in sometimes getting information in as timely a manner as some of our citizens received it. So it has to be a level playing field. It has to be a level playing field.
And the mayor has come out supporting the chief in giving that level of access and saying that she wouldn't investigate it any further. What were your thoughts about that? Sitting on council and making the call for the investigation and yet not the support from the mayor to do so? What went through your mind?
Amanda, we were making the call, but the citizens were making the call. We are elected to represent. So here we are bombarded from our citizens who live here asking, what is going on? And how is the mayor handling that? And remember, the mayor is his supervisor. She has the control over that. So I would have to say that was the mayor's purview. That wouldn't have been the course of action I would have taken. But that's where it's landed. And you know, the chief has to be accountable to everybody. He is not elected. He's appointed and approved by council. But everybody looks to him like he's an elected. That's the status the chief of police holds, the status that the fire chief holds. And we are held to a higher standard. And I acknowledge that. But the one cool thing about being human, Amanda, is when we do a misstep, I think people can really appreciate when we say, you know what? I didn't do the right thing. I'm sorry. I can do better. And I think that's just as powerful when we lead.
So just to kind of wrap up with this, what do you think is the appropriate level of oversight that council should have over the police chief?
Well, the way our charter is written, that really falls to the purview of the mayor. As with other department heads that she's had go through her administration. Council needs to be kept in the loop though. Because again, the face of the city is City Council. Nobody's showing up at the mayor's office every Monday night testifying about their needs, their wants, and their concerns. So they come to us first as council members and they expect us to do something about it. And we do as much as we can within our purview of where the charter is written.
I want to move on to homelessness. First of all, Camp Hope, got to ask for your insight on that. Closed in June, a few weeks earlier than the deadline that was set. I want to hear what your thoughts are, Betsy, on the lessons learned from the formation to the closure of Camp Hope.
Amanda, the lessons learned is if we worked together sooner, we could have closed that camp sooner. There was a lot of, I would say, different perspectives on how to do that and who would do the work. But I know there has been darts thrown at Commerce. But I tell you, if Commerce had not shown up with the money that they did, that camp would still be there today. Because the city does, did not, and does not have the money that it took to really decommission that camp. And kudos to Washtot for their compassion for as long as those folks were there. And Amanda, that camp's closed, but it didn't solve anything. There are still homeless people. The track shelter is still full, over 300 people a night. There are people still camping in neighborhoods. So the challenge is there. So just moving people around like chess pieces on a board is not a solution. We really got, I say, lock us in a room and don't let us come out till we come to some decisions and outcomes that benefit not only the homeless people, but the people who actually live in Spokane as well.
You mentioned Trent Shelter, the track. What is your vision for the future of track?
I like to see the track decommissioned as well.
Really?
There is no fun.
That could ruffle some feathers.
That could ruffle some feathers, I know. But 300 people at the track shelter is larger than some of our small towns. And they have no form of government.
So where would they go? I mean, that's 300 people.
And Amanda, that is the question. That's the question. Everybody wants them to go somewhere. Where are they going to go and how are we going to pay for it? I have always been a fan of the scatter site model with smaller facilities that neighborhoods can absorb, you know, 50 to 70 people. A neighborhood cannot absorb 300 people.
Well, that sounds kind of like the Cannon Street Shelter model.
Yes, yes, it was.
And that still had some, you know, upset neighbors in the area. And it eventually closed.
It eventually closed. But also eventually, if you talk to many other people in Brown's addition, they had started to form a relationship with the Cannon Shelter and they were working through their issues. So there was...
That's that good neighbor.
The good neighbor agreement, yes. So there was starting to be collaboration there with the track.
Which you think maybe is proof that it can work? Is that what you're saying?
It can work. And so just so people know, there are a number of mental health facilities throughout the city of Spokane in various neighborhoods, coexisting and not causing problems, serving the same type of people that are at the track shelter right now.
I do want to ask about the Cannon Street Shelter. Once it closed, there was a proposal that came forward to repurpose it into a respite center funded by Medicaid.
Right.
Where do you land on that? Would you like to see it turned into the respite center?
I would like to see that. The challenge was, that was a good proposal. They didn't have the right people at the table because to be a respite shelter, you have to go through the Department of Social and Health Services. It couldn't happen just overnight. There is a whole process application. And so there was much more to it than we'll just turn into a respite shelter. So there are requirements out there and guidelines, which are great because it helps keep people safe.
And forgive me, what would you like to see?
I would like to see, it could be a navigation center.
Kind of like track?
Well, track, I don't know if I would really call that as a true navigation center. But if you're downtown and you want services, you got to catch the bus to go to track to get services. So really, that's a huge barrier. And if you don't have a bus pass to get there. So if something was downtown for them to go to and services, I think that's a great model. What really makes me chuckle is, we used to call those wraparound services back in the day.
Oh, yes. I recall that phrase.
You recall it, wraparound?
What does that mean?
What does that mean? But somewhere centralized is really the best model. So I think going forward, track provides some, but I think we could do a better job if it wasn't just attached to a shelter itself. Because everybody that needs services don't need the shelter piece. But you're forcing them to go there to get the help they need.
Speaking with homelessness, Proposition 1 is on the general election ballot this year. It's the Citizens Initiative where it would ban encampments within 1,000 feet of Spokane schools, daycares. I've seen reports that you don't support it and voted against it. So why don't you support Proposition 1?
Amanda, again, everybody needs to be safe. If you look at a map of Proposition 1 and the topography of our landscape of the city, that covers about 95%. If you can't camp here, where can you camp? That's the question that nobody's asking. Well, based on this map, it will be in neighborhoods. So we're forcing homeless people into neighborhoods where neighborhoods really don't have the ability and the capacity to deal with that. We really need to look at where can people be. Because we're not going to just get them all to leave Spokane. There's over 2,000 people. That type of displacement and the funding. And again, the question is, the citizens, where can they go and how can we support them in that?
What do you say to maybe folks who live by these schools or daycares and believe the intent behind the proposition is to increase safety in their area?
I agree. I agree. The intent is to increase safety. But Amanda, currently with our public safety officers, how are we going to enforce that? We don't have enough officers now to enforce a lot of the things that are on the books. And there's nothing worse than when there's a law and a citizen says someone's breaking the law and they call the police and the police don't come. That just adds another layer of frustration.
So you don't think it'll be enforceable in reality of this?
In reality, I personally don't see how we could do it, a citywide. And so once it is enforced, then where will they go? The jail is full. I'm sure that's another question you have for me. You know, so they go in one door and they come out the other. Again, what's the root problem and what have we solved?
Yeah, you caught me in my plan ahead. Yeah, so Measure 1 is the other, measure on the ballot. So Measure 1 look... So Measure 1 looks at increasing the sales tax to 0.2% with the revenue from that funding the building of, or the construction of a new jail behind the current one. Do you support it?
I do not. And I have to say this, when I spoke to my high school class, I says, "Are you guys following this? Because you'll be paying for this tax till you're the age of 48 years old, because it's for 30 years." I don't support it, because to me, it's not completely well thought out. There is a lot of, "We may do this, we may do that, we may provide these services." Too many generalities going forward. My other description was, if you went to the bank to buy a house, and you just said, "Hey, I need to borrow money for a house, but I don't have it all figured out yet," do you think the bank would lend you the money? I don't think, they wouldn't lend it to me, I don't know about anybody else. So for what we're asking, there needs to be more specificity. And it says, "Well, 60% will go to the county, and 40% will go to the other municipalities." Well, the city of Spokane will only get 24%, because you've got to go to Airway Heights, Liberty Lakes, Spokane Valley. And what does that do, and what does that look like, Amanda? So if they had delayed it until next year, and really figured out some of the things that we're talking about, services, I believe they would have had everybody on board. So it feels a little rushed.
Point taken, but in press conferences with county commissioners, Chair Mary Cooney, shared a press conference with the sheriff and Mayor Woodward, this hasn't been an overnight decision to put it on the ballot. It's been in discussions for quite some time. So maybe spill the tea for me in that regard. Was city council ever really brought to the table for any of those early discussions?
We were not. When we heard that it was going on about, that was decided between two county commissioners, because Commissioner Cooney wasn't even there at the time that happened. And again, if we had been brought in early in the process, some of the stuff that we're recommending would have been included in this measure, we could have worked that out, and it would have had total support. So the conversations were happening amongst some council members, but it wasn't happening amongst all council members.
So more flushed out plan would have gotten your support.
More flushed out plan. It could have, we could have been workshopping. And also, the other challenge was, it was supposed to have had community engagement. On the council Monday night, when I inquired about that, the only community engagement had been with other municipalities. There had been nothing that had been taken truly out to the community and to community groups to get their feedback. And they're the ones who will be voting. So again, there's room at the table for all the voices. Let's just make sure they're there.
I want to talk a little bit about housing in Spokane. Our population continues to grow. The secret's out. Spokane is a beautiful place to live.
Beautiful place.
So what steps would you take as council president to really address this growing population we're seeing, and the housing squeeze we're feeling here in Spokane?
Yeah, the secret's out. It used to be, people came to Spokane because it was affordable. That was the big attraction.
I know I did.
Yeah. In Brown's addition, when rent was $450 a month for a little two-bedroom apartment, now you can't even rent a room in somebody's house for that. So we have looked at zoning to increase housing and opportunities. We've looked at funding $15, $90, you know, to help build those units that we need, affordable housing. We're looking at incentives for developers to do more infill, because the infrastructure is already in. So those vacant lots you see, because I believe once neighborhoods are more activated, that really takes down crime. When people are out there, you don't see criminals hanging around where people are playing and having fun. So I would like to continue those steps going forward. And of course, with our state and federal monies, there are dollars out there that we could capture, that we have not captured consistently. I think there's been some, but not consistently, to have the resources we need to build Spokane the way we want to. And really, I want to invest in neighborhoods. We've got some cool funky neighborhoods. We've got the Perry District, great place to hang out. We've got Garland, we've got North Monroe. The East Fifth Avenue is trying to develop and grow into its own neighborhood. We've got the Hilliard Neighborhoods. That's what makes Spokane special. So let's grow those hubs, you know, and not taking anything away from downtown, but those little hubs are the spice of the city. And we go there, and those are businesses that are owned usually by Spokaneites who were born and raised here, and continue to stay here because they want to give back. They want to raise their families here.
Great. Do you want to kind of go back a little bit to some campaign points here? Let's see, so we mentioned that you've been running a positive campaign, not so much on your opponent's side. So I did see you had a recent campaign email that went out, saying that Spokane voters have two choices. Elect an experienced leader who will be ready to start the job at day one, or, and it appears to be a subtle reference to your opponent, let outside special interests buy this race and push the city backwards. I wanted to talk through that with you. What do you mean by that?
Amanda, there has been so much outside money that has come into this race, or these races. It's almost sinful, absolutely sinful. And so my opponent has had lots of support from certain groups, over 100,000...
What groups? Are there some that come to mind?
Realtors and builders have supported her, and have contributed to her campaign in independent expenditures to the tune of, she's raised over $270,000. I think Spokaneites, that's what I call the Spokaneites, really don't want outside money coming into our community. Yes, I have had support from union and labor, but they've been local, and a lot of those are people who live right here, so very grassroots. So I want the support of people who live here, where my decisions will impact. I don't need money coming from Chicago or some other place to influence, and why would they? That sounds like, why would somebody from another state be so interested in Spokane, that they would kind of double down on that? So that's a challenge. And again, I look at all the money that could have gone to nonprofits and to our homeless issues, and it would have made a significant difference, because it's a nice chunk of change.
So Betsy, I did take a look at the Public Disclosure Commission. I looked at the numbers after seeing that reference. And the current Public Disclosure Commission numbers actually shows that you've received more contributions from out of Spokane and out of state than Kim Please by $10,000. What do you say to that?
So I had a great group of supporters, women, who supported me out of the Seattle area. They saw my campaign and liked the way I was going, and how I was presenting myself. And they were investing in me as a woman and as a leader. And for that, I'm proud of that.
What about the out of state? I noticed that there are nine separate other state contributions on your campaign, whereas Kim Please has contributions listed from four other states. I mean, just to kind of drive home, I mean, the criticism of out of Spokane.
Absolutely, that's a valid point, but look at the amount of money that was contributed.
Let's see, well, out of state, you've got...
From each group, though.
Well, total, just out of state, you've received over $5,300. And with Kim Please, out of state, to your point, out of state, $12,000, just over $12,000.
Right. So you know what? Some of the headquarters are located out of state. They're local, but their funding comes through their national organizations, and whatever that process is, Amanda. And I'm glad for all that support, but how they do their funding, that I don't know, and I don't track. So that's within their organizations.
In the end, what do you hope voters take away from where your contributions are coming from? Again, right? We're still seeing out of state funding come into your campaign.
I think, looking at the PDC, if you look at the number of individual voters...
That's 85% of your contributions.
85% of my contributions have come from individual voters. And so, to me, that's a mandate, and shows grassroots support for our race. And I have always been a bottoms up and middle out, because I want to represent the people. And I think my campaign has resonated with them, and that's why they are contributing. So truly, 85% is from individual donors. And again, thank you to all those who have contributed to the campaign.
Thank you for talking through that with me. One other hot button issue I got to ask you about. The city council recently denounced Mayor Nadine Woodward for appearing at a prayer event with former state legislator Matt Shea. You were part of that council, making that decision to denounce. So can you tell me, why did you support this action that council made?
Amanda, we were denouncing, the mayor is always the mayor. Wherever she goes, once you're elected, you're always elected. I could be at the grocery store or Baskin Robbins, one of my favorite hangouts. I'm always City Council member Betsy Wilkinson, if I'm in church or not in church. The mayor is the CEO of this city, and she was at an event, nothing to do with praying, pray without ceasing. Our city needs it, so does our country. But that affiliation...
With Matt Shea.
With Matt Shea, really set a terrible tone, and it's been connecting the dots. There's been so many more hate incidences in our city since that happened. Is that a part? I don't know, but there has been a rise. We have to let the citizens of Spokane know we stand against that. And from an economic perspective, we have to let the businesses know we stand against that, Amanda. We look at all our sports events and our concert events. It would only take one incident of racial discrimination or hate that would impact all the good work we have been doing in Spokane. One child goes home and tells their parent they were discriminated against in Spokane from some sports club. That starts to reverberate throughout that sector, and then we're back fighting an uphill battle to maintain the integrity of Spokane. We have seen our neighbors go through this battle. It is not one that Spokane wants to take on. So it's for the safety and the economic impact of our community.
What do you say to the statements that Mayor Woodward has released, saying she was either unaware of Matt Shea's involvement, and regrets being up on stage with him? And does that give any value to going forward to you?
I think that's great. You know, Amanda, it would have been great if she had just came to council before all the pressure, and we could have came out together and said, "This is not Spokane." Instead, council was standing, I felt, alone in our position on that. But it could have been a moment of true unity if we had collaborated together.
To follow up with that, Mayor Woodward aside, going forward as council president, do you think by the city council censuring or denouncing an elected city official, is that enough? Is that an action that's strong enough to hold an elected city official accountable? Because it's only just a formal disapproval.
Amanda, it's the only tool we have. If there needs to be more, we would need to look at changing our laws. And I think the citizens should weigh in on that. And the citizens will weigh in on that at the election, at the ballot box, if it was strong enough or not. They will have their say.
Thank you, Betsy. To wrap up, when voters go to the polls, and they're deciding between who is their council president, what do you hope from your campaign stands out to them?
I hope what stands out to them is, we have, you have a choice. You have a leader who has served Spokane for many, many, many years in many areas of our community. I have experienced leadership, and I listen, I understand how to govern and to lead that city council office. I have the relationships it takes to move us forward and to be ready on day one. It's not a job that you come in and learn on the job, because when you're elected, the next council meeting is the next Monday night. And so you've got to be ready to do what it takes to really do the business of Spokane. So I really solicit your support at betsywilkinson.com. I'm committed. I love this city, and that's why I'm really running, because I believe we can thrive, and we can keep our best and brightest. We haven't talked about young people, but they are a critical component of Spokane continuing to thrive going into the future.
Well, thank you so much, Betsy, for sitting down with me and spilling the tea on who you are.
Thank you, thank you. Cheers.
Cheers, yes. Thank you.